Which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
And one nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Invisible.
For liberty and justice.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice for all.
I think we're actually getting the hang of it.
I don't think so.
Really didn't sound good.
Um, hey, I would like to point out before we get going, we have, uh, two new student rep members on Bella and Grace. So welcome aboard. So, uh, Juliana, you don't have to tow everything by yourself anymore. Uh, very exciting. Um, first thing we got is adjustments. Uh, we do actually have an adjustment. Uh, we had put item, uh, is it new business? Yeah, item J two was gonna be the custodial unit contract. Uh, we've not had any motion on that, so we're going to remove that, uh, part of the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote on it. Uh, Kendra, how do you vote?
Second in the waiting room again.
You pop her in that?
I have her in.
There she is.
Are you in now, Kendra? No, no Kendra? Well, we can put her down for an abstain on this one. Emily, where are you?
Yes.
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Uh, so the item J two is off the agenda. Uh, next we have approval of minutes.
Don, uh, Don, I have another adjustment as well.
Oh, do you? Sorry.
Yep. Um, under resignations, um, I'd like to remove Jennifer Merrill from the resignations. She has decided to remain with us.
Yeah.
Yep, good news.
Gotcha. So I'll make that motion. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Uh, do we have Kendra yet?
No, Kendra just texted me and she's not gonna be able to join us, I don't think, even though it says she's here. She's gonna have to watch on cable, she said.
Well, she'll be here in spirit.
Yes.
Okay, Emily, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well, so we will remove Jennifer from the resignations. Okay, is that it now, Matt?
Yes.
Yeah, I know you told me about that when I forgot, so. Uh, approval of minutes. Uh, I will make a motion to accept the minutes from August 10th, Executive Session 445, August 10th, Executive Session 530, August 10th, Summer Meeting at 6:30. August 24th, Executive Session at 5:00. October 5th, Executive Session at 4:30. October 5th, Executive Session at 5:30. October 5th, Executive Session at 5:00. October 15th, Executive Session at 11:00 AM. November 2nd, Executive Session at 5:30. And November 16th, Executive Session at 4:30. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you gotta vote on all of them at once, Don?
Yeah, just doing one big chunk.
And four.
Uh, Emily, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative as well.
My only comment, Don, is that it'd be nice to have these, uh, we used to get them pretty frequently and this, that's I don't know, I don't know what I did yesterday, didn't mind August without reviewing, you know, deep into the archives here, so just be like, nice to get the minutes current.
Gotcha, noted. Um, next we have public comments. Um, the only thing I wanted to bring up now, I know we got an email from, uh, Tom Miskio promoting, uh, full-time students in school. I just wanna put that out there that we are getting input from folks regarding the school scheduling and they'd like to see kids back in classes full-time. Uh, I know Matt's doing the best he can to follow CDC and main deal we health guidelines. And, uh, that's the way it goes, so.
And you just got another one that said, go remote for everybody.
Yeah, exactly. So it's kind of both sides of everything.
Right.
Do you have anything here, Matt, that's come in either via the email or?
No, nothing else.
Okay, do we have anything, anybody on the Zoom meeting that would like to make a public comment? Uh, I don't see anybody, so we will move on to, uh, Agenda Item F, Communications. I see none. We don't have anything that popped up, did we, Matt?
Nope.
Okay, then let's move on to Committee Reports, Construction Updates. The floor is yours, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, so I'll start with the high school and the technical center. Um, the punch list, uh, remains, uh, at forty-four items. Uh, but, um, our contractor, uh, has noted that they've addressed fifteen and we just got word today that, uh, one of their subcontractors has completed work on five of the others. So that, uh, brings it to over twenty. Uh, LaValle, our, uh, architect is gonna have to backcheck those. Uh, but the hope is that that's gonna get that, uh, list deck down to about twenty-four items. We have kept retainage at approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but I think more importantly, uh, we, uh, coordinated a conference video call uh, back at the beginning of December with all parties so that we could review all of the HVAC issues, uh, still needing corrections. Uh, the equipment supplier, uh, has agreed to go on-site and review the equipment in person to address why some units are tripping during cold weather and determine how to address the issues. Um, they, uh, requested, uh, that any issues be documented and we have been sending them that information to help them determine the cause. Uh, with that, also, uh, the mechanical engineers are also gonna join them uh, on-site tomorrow, uh, to review and, uh, hopefully look at solutions. One of the things, uh, that was encouraging was some of this information, um, that we had, they were unaware of. Um, so hopefully, as disappointing as that is, the good news is we're all getting together tomorrow. Um, with that, and, uh, they're gonna send out a report of their findings and their remedies, um, for that. Uh, for that, we realized that this is, um, could take a little bit more time than just tomorrow, so we've also, uh, extended some time for Wednesday to be able to do that. Um, so that is, uh, helpful. Uh, we also, uh, have a situation where, um, the contractor has asked us, um, for their contractual, their contractual right, uh, asked for mediation, uh, between, uh, the contractor and one of their subcontractors, um, with some of the work that has gone on. So that's something that we have shared with our, um, legal counsel as well as, uh, the core building committee, uh, for, uh, that proposed mediation. We're looking to take, uh, to do that in February. The hope would be that that would be done in early February, um, for that. So, uh, that's an update. Uh, also, um, last week with the, um, heavy rain and wind that we had, uh, we did get some leaks that were reported, um, for that. So those are things that we're working with the, um, architect and the contractor as we're able to look through those, uh, to make sure that we're all set. Uh, to see if that's, uh, a roof warranty issue or if it's more around installation issues, um, for that. Any questions for the high school or the technical center?
That doesn't look like any, Matt, so let's move on to the, uh, elementary.
Okay, I'll start with, uh, Margaret Chase Smith School. Um, we remember, uh, we still have sixteen open punch list items, so you may think that, wait a minute, what's going on here? It doesn't feel like we're getting much progress. Uh, but we are because we is, uh, we are knocking some things off the list. There are some other things that are being discovered also, uh, that we are putting back onto the list, uh, for that. We were able to get call switches into two of the rooms, uh, well, we're gonna get call switches into the two of the rooms. That's gonna take place this Wednesday. That's one of the challenges that we have with this work is not only do we have to arrange the subcontractors, but while our students are in school, it's difficult to be able to do that work. So we've been trying to do a lot of that work on Wednesdays, uh, to be able to, uh, help with that. Some of the issues that we've recently discovered was a missing access panel, um, for that, uh, in one of the bathrooms off of the cafeteria. Also, a roof leak, um, in the guidance, uh, office. We also had another roof leak, uh, in the corridor. Um, and that came through with this last storm back on Monday. And then we also had a, uh, breaker tripping at the hand wash and bottle fill station. So those are ones that we've recently added to the punch list, um, for that. Uh, we also noticed that, uh, during the, um, recently that, um, we had outside, uh, one of our propane switches, uh, that we had outside with that. That, um, it shut off to the propane, which is on the side of the building. That is actually, uh, on the side of the building and it's near the playground. And so we're concerned about that as a safety issue that people could have access to that. So we're addressing that to put a cover and a padlock on that. Uh, we don't have to move it, we just have to secure it to make sure that that's not something that, um, could be, um, students would be able to access. Uh, also, uh, as I've mentioned about the, uh, flashing lights down at Margaret Chase Smith School, uh, the contractor has directed their, uh, subcontractor, uh, to install a sign. This would just be a sign that's gonna be fifty feet in front of where the current yellow flashing lights are. They've been working with our city officials for code. It does make, uh, it does make that recommendation. Initially, they were looking at moving the flashing light, but that is something that is, uh, powered by solar power. And I think there was a concern that if we moved that, uh, to a different location, it may not get as much sunlight. So this way, um, and a few other challenges with that, that they are now putting a, a school zone sign, uh, fifty feet in front, and then that will lead you right into where the flashing lights are. And that should satisfy, uh, as I mentioned, code and get us, uh, that issue taken care of. Any questions on Margaret Chase Smith? All right, so I'll move on to, um, uh, the Converted Elementary School and Sanford Middle School. I'll start with the Converted Elementary, uh, Elementary School. The abatement clearances for the upper level, um, are expected in the next couple of days. I didn't hear anything today, uh, or if I did, I haven't seen it yet. Um, so nothing, uh, yet, but that's hope to get that, uh, at the beginning of this week. Abatement for the lower level is ongoing and slightly ahead of schedule. Uh, once we get that, uh, clearance for the upper level, the contractor's gonna proceed with the slab demo and construction in that area. A change approval was recently given to repair some underground piping discovered to be sagging and causing some backup issues. Uh, really, this was a timely find for us. Uh, be able to give the contractor approved that and they're gonna be getting work, uh, there this week. We also gave change approval to replace the sprinkler heads throughout the building. Uh, this is gonna be able to allow us to change the sprinkler heads that are near the end of their lifestyle, their life cycle, and it also allows for more seamless, uh, ceiling tile install, which is what we will be doing as part of our bond, uh, for that. The architect is working on a proposal for other work that we have requested, uh, as part of the bond through our, uh, core building committee, uh, and so that we can assemble prices, um, for that and we'll be able to review and keep that work ongoing. Several conflicts for the new mechanical duct work have been discovered and the engineers are reviewing, uh, on-site to create alternate approaches in areas that may need to be adjusted. Uh, right now, um, the contractor, uh, notes that they are on target and on schedule. And we have approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars left in the contingency. Uh, moving over to Sanford Middle School, that project closeout continues. Uh, we've been working with, uh, our PT and OT rooms and administration, uh, and with their break rooms. And so we are gonna be, uh, installing, uh, rubber flooring for that, um, for that, so we are coordinating that. There are some kitchen flooring issues that, uh, the contractor's gonna investigate, uh, when their flooring work is also ongoing at the Converted Elementary School to take advantage of that. Uh, we did get a few roof leaks that are coming in, uh, through last week's heavy rain that we're investigating, uh, through the roofer. And, uh, we were able to, uh, have our students start using the playground. Uh, that was a bond expense that was installed. We're still waiting for, uh, a couple parts for the tables and the covers. And, um, those are looking to be put in, uh, tomorrow, uh, to wrap that up, um, for that. Also, as part of a bond expense, we have installed the additional gym bleachers at the middle school and another bond expense, uh, for the controls to be able to make sure that the building is, um, all-new controls and that the whole entire school is on one system. Uh, those are almost, uh, completed as well. So work continues on at the middle school and the elementary school. One thing that came up, if you remember back, uh, with the, um, middle school project, uh, we did end up going to mediation over the delay costs back in August. One of those results of that mediation was that there were probably a, a number of, uh, change orders, uh, probably looking at somewhere about twenty-five or so that were kind of still in dispute that we needed to work out. Uh, so we did start that process, uh, with that. Uh, that list of twenty-four is now down to about nine, uh, fifteen of those avoided or removed. So we're now down to about nine. Uh, the total of those is, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty-eight thousand dollars, um, for that. So, um, we are, um, uh, continuing to work with the contractor on that issue. Also, uh, as part of this project, we did have a request from the contractor for some escalation costs uh, for certain areas in the Converted Elementary School project, uh, as a result of, of the delay. And so we have received those and I have reached out to a legal counsel to be able to get guidance on those, um, escalation cost requests from the contractor as part of a change order. Any questions on Sanford Middle School or the Converted Elementary School?
Uh, see, doesn't look like it, Matt. Thanks for the update.
Yeah, well, Don, does Jonathan, so Matt, Matt, I'll still echo my concerns on the reports. I, it seems as if this is a recorded meeting, everything you said is, you know, recorded. So I still think just a written report of what you just said would be more concise and easier for me to look at at another time. Listening to you, I, I really, I don't know, I found myself, well, I get daydreaming, so I don't, I'm not even, you ask, are there any questions? Uh, no, cuz I can't follow. Maybe it's just me, but I'd love to have you, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a lot of information there. I think one of the things that I can do is obviously we try to include these, uh, for the minutes of the meeting, as I forward those to Liz to help with that, I can also forward them to the rest of the school committee as well, just so that you'll have a chance. And I can try to, uh, also, if it's, uh, okay, try to send it out in advance as well.
Uh, that would be, that'd be perfect. If you sent it in advance, a one-page, you know, granted, three months ago, a year ago, would have been a five-page report. And, you know, this was probably your shortest report on construction, and maybe you did that deliberately, I don't know. Or we're slowly getting away, getting away from it, but it seems to eat up a good portion of our meetings and then we, you know, it gets late and we get tired and we don't wanna talk anymore, so. I don't know, I just, I guess I'm simply just tired of construction reports. So are you, I'm sure.
Yeah, that makes two of us, but, um, I will, um, I think what I can do, because when we send the agenda out on Wednesday, a lot can happen between Wednesday and Monday, so I think I'll, I'll continue to be able to, uh, work on those, uh, and try to send out concise information that the school committee members can have in advance.
Yeah, so if there's a couple of things that happened from when you do the report to the meeting, you can brief us on those couple of things.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a valid point, Jonathan. I think we're all getting, uh, construction burnout, if you will. And, uh, you know, no offense, uh, Matt, but I'll look forward to the day when we don't have these as agenda items.
Well, as I say, we can get our superintendent back.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
Yeah, not the foreman.
Uh, okay.
I do have one question for you, though. I just wanna put it on record. I know you, I brought it up to you and the board before about the section of parking over MCS. And I noticed they snowplowed, obviously, this weekend and they pushed a sizable amount of dirt and gravel towards the drainage, the section of the drainage. And I just wanna make sure that as, when spring and the next, and the next snowstorm comes and the more dirt we push over to the drainage ditch, is that gonna cause a problem or are we gonna have a long-term problem with all that gravel going into the drainage ditch at the entrance?
Hey, maybe for, uh, folks that are listening that don't, uh, John's talking about the section that wasn't paved, uh, like out towards Twombly, right, John?
Correct, yeah. And I just happened to drive by today and I noticed, uh, in the snow, there was just a sizable amount of gravel, as it's gonna be, because that section is not paved. And I think long-term it's gonna create a problem in the drainage.
Yeah, no, I.
I just wanted, we don't, I just wanna put that on record.
Yep, no, I, I'll let Don Nichols look into that for us, John. Um, I do know when you brought it up, the last time, we did investigate in terms of trying to see what it would do to take, uh, to get that done. Uh, and the number that came back at that particular time was very, very cost prohibitive. We thought that some of that was just probably not wanting to do it at this time of the year, uh, and how difficult in sending that back. But you're right, we wanna make sure as we are doing our snow removal that, uh, not only does it take care of snow removal now, but it also doesn't set us up for any problems, uh, in the spring.
Okay, duly noted, John. Thanks for bringing that up. Uh, anything else with construction? We're good. I'll take that as we're good and we'll move on to, uh, Performing Arts Committee with Emily. What do you have for us, Emily?
Sure. So, um, we did meet earlier this afternoon and we kicked off the meeting with, uh, continuing our exciting, um, discussion about the, um, Free For All series that's sponsored by the Keep Your Mask, Keep Your Sticks and Wear Your Mask campaign. Um, they did unfortunately have to cancel Saturday night's, um, performance, uh, due to the weather. Um, just because so many students are working on, uh, the cameras and behind the scenes, they didn't want them traveling Saturday evening. Um, but there are two shows left. Uh, there's a show, uh, this Saturday, the 12th, um, at seven, is it? Yes, at 7:00 PM. Uh, the Mallett Brothers Band. And then on the 19th is Sing We Noel, which is a classical uprising experience, and that's at 6:00 PM. Both of those will, uh, finish off the series. They will be streaming live on WSSR TV on YouTube. Subscribe if you have not yet. Um, we did go over the financials for the series and it looks like we're going to have a net profit from that on top of receiving some donations from a tip jar that was in the, um, theater, um, a couple mail-in donations. So that's good news. Um, we went over, uh, more about the box office software update that's, um, happening. Um, Brett having to build the website over again because of that. Um, oh, mailing, um, postcards will be going out, so you should be getting those in your, your mailbox within the next couple days regarding the series. And we talked, um, extensively about the twenty-one, twenty-two season and what we wanna see and gave Brett some really great ideas of what we wanna have come back or what's new. Um, and I think that's it, just really trying to tune in to the last two performances again on December 12th at 7:00 PM is the Mallett Brothers Band. December 19th is Sing We Noel at 6:00 PM. That will be nice to, um, kick off the holiday week. Um, I did wanna mention that this is probably with, with how much, um, the arts have lost due to COVID, this is probably one of the most upbeat bunch of people on this committee. We always have a great time. So, uh, this will be my final report, however, I will miss them. And, uh, whoever, uh, joins the committee as a school rep, um, will have a great time with them. The next meeting is January 4th at 3:00 PM. Um, they meet every, um, first Monday of the month at 3:00 PM. So, uh, be thinking of that and who you want to replace me. Thanks.
Is Brett paying you to hype the, uh, the committee, Emily?
No, no, it's just, it is a great committee. I think Matt will agree that they're just a really op, you know, they have a lot of optimism and they're just really upbeat. They're, they're a good bunch.
Yeah, well, the Performing Arts Center is definitely a huge, uh, boon for Sanford, so it's exciting to be part of that and all the stuff that's coming in once we get on the other side of COVID.
Exactly.
So thanks, Emily. Uh, I will, uh, take care of the WSSR update since Kendra's not able to jump on. Uh, I wasn't able to attend the last Zoom, but I got the minutes from it. Uh, they're working on, uh, more, uh, income. Uh, Ian Housel from the city has actually been really great to work with. Uh, they're hoping there's gonna be some public messaging money in the next stimulus package and we can, uh, do something with WSSR with that. Uh, Sarah gave us some numbers on stuff that's happening. So during the past thirty days, and this was from, uh, November 18th, uh, YouTube had, the YouTube channel, it had twenty-two thousand views, uh, three thousand hours of watch time and a hundred and eighteen new subscribers. Uh, thirty different events have been streamed, uh, fifteen were athletics with an average of three hundred and fifty views each. Facebook page is up twenty-five likes. Uh, they've done a bunch of other stuff in here. Uh, so things are really happening with WSSR is the bottom of that. Uh, we're looking at, um, trying to figure out some sort of mechanism for money coming into WSSR to stay within WSSR. Uh, so we had actually had some chats with Matt and Cheryl as far as whether we should do a special revenue account or an enterprise account. Uh, so we're still looking at that. Uh, that'll be something for the school committee to look at soon. Uh, postcards are supposed to be going out. If they haven't gone out already, I haven't seen it yet, so I don't think it's gone out, but just kind of a promotional, hey, this is WSSR and subscribe to the YouTube channel and all that. Uh, there's been some discussion about the, uh, the GWI internet uh, deal with the city and whether some of the funding from that can go to WSSR, so that was with Ian as well. Uh, and then finally, uh, one of the big discussions which has been ongoing is, uh, kind of the bandwidth of WSSR, if you will. You know, it's really been primarily Sarah Schnell for the past few years and Sarah, as incredible as she is, is just, uh, one, one person. So if we're gonna grow WSSR, there's some discussion about what that's gonna entail and what we want it to look like. Um, so that's something that the, uh, the steering committee has on their radar. And like Emily said, WSSR will be the place to see the concert Saturday. Uh, and I'd plug that again. I've watched most of the other ones and they do an incredible job. It's a very professional, uh, feed. Um, it's live, it's something to do, so everybody check it out. And that is it for WSSR. Any questions about anything with that or the SPAC?
Yeah, eh, Don, duly SSR, you know, you and I've talked and the committee has talked and councils have talked, a lot of talk. But I know it's a tough budget season, but Sanford needs a, a communication piece other than, you know, Facebook. So I hope we can find some funding between the city and school budgets to do what you just said, get Sarah some help and make this thing a reality. We can keep kicking it down the road, but it's, it's too damn important to continue to ignore.
Yeah, I have to agree with you. It's pretty exciting cuz I think there's a lot of energy with it now. Um, you know, Ann Hanselman, uh, Mr. Stackpole, they're on it from the city council. We've got school committee representation. Ian's been very involved with it from the city side of stuff. So I think we really do have a nice solid, you know, joint effort here. And it, it really, we need a communication outlet. And WSSR is the perfect, perfect mechanism for that, so.
It is. Thanks.
Don, Don, I would just add too, I'm glad you mentioned it, um, cuz I know during the, the meeting, uh, Sarah had talked about what she's been up to this fall. Um, and that's impressive. Uh, when you look and see the reach and the different things that were coming in to be able to work on and get that out there, uh, kudos, uh, with that. I know Sarah also helped out when we talk about coordination with the city. She also helped out with their tree lighting by Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, uh, as well. So it, it's, uh, when you look at, uh, there, you can actually see everything that's been going on. And I think that's an important piece when people can really see it in action and see the value and see the breadth and see all that is being done.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning the tree lighting. I was going to bring that up. That video is, it's really nice. Go to YouTube and check it out if you haven't. It's some nice artistic work of Mr. and Mrs. Claus coming and lighting the tree. And Sarah did some, some nice editing on it, so I assume it's Sarah.
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's move on. So we have the Student Representative Reports. So we've got Bella and Grace for their first one. It's a little difficult just being on Zoom because normally you guys could kind of find it out amongst yourselves as to who goes first. But we'll, I'll call you out, so we'll start with Juliana and see what you have. You can show them how it's done.
Okay, I don't have many updates tonight. However, the Civil Rights Team is organizing a video for the Day of Welcome, so that's always good. But there isn't many other updates, so.
Yeah, so there you go, Grace and Bella. See how easy that was? That didn't seem painful at all. Let's go with Bella next.
I mean, I've been home virtual, I broke my foot, but I will be sending in a video for Peer Helpers for our Christmas song flash mob, virtual flash mob.
That's cool. Great, is that it, Bella? Yeah, great, thanks. Let's go to Grace. Hey, Grace, how you doing?
Um, I'm good. I don't really have any updates. I've just been going to SRTC, and then I come home and do school virtually, so.
And you guys make life sound so glamorous and exciting. Okay, thanks a lot. Mr. Nelson, COVID-19 update.
Okay, so since our last meeting at that time, we knew that based on a confirmed positive test at Sanford Middle School that I had decided to put them on, to go remote on November, starting on November 16th and 17th. Our hope was that we were going to be able to return. But we had, I made the decision based on the information that we have that Sanford Middle School would go remote from the 16th right up through the, to the Thanksgiving break and right up and return after we get back from vacation, from the break last Monday on November 30th. That was good because we did have some more positive cases that did come up prior to the vacation, the break for that. But the middle school's been back in with their hybrid model starting last Monday. We did have a lot of, a situation where at the high school, where since our last meeting, we had 14 high school and two SRTC individuals test positive with that. Sounds like a very high number, and it is. But all of those were coming from community transmission or family transmission. It wasn't coming from anything in the school transmission. Obviously, anytime you do have more than three positive cases, that's something that will be investigated by the Maine CDC. So last Tuesday on December 1st, in meeting with them, they did declare, declare that the high school was an official outbreak through the Maine CDC. We had meetings with their team. This is the second time that the high school was an outbreak. First time being back at the beginning of September. This time, as we came through, we met with them through their team, evaluate the situation. They were, due to the Thanksgiving break, there wasn't a lot of contact tracing. There were some, but not as much as people would think regarding that. And so we were an outbreak, but working with them, they felt that schools are very safe with the protocols that we have in place. And so we did last Thursday and Friday, with Wednesday being a full remote day. We also had Thursday and Fridays full remote days that would give us some time to evaluate and see how things were going. I made the decision Friday afternoon, after consulting with CDC, DOE, our school nurses, our administrators, to have the high school and the technical center come back to their hybrid in-person instruction model beginning today. With that, for an update on the cases that we had at the high school, we have six that are currently still out in isolation. Five of them are hybrid students, one of them is just a full remote student. The rest of them have ended, and those people are back to school. At the middle school, we did have, we do have five students that are not cleared to return. You may be wondering, hey, when you have cases more than three at the middle school, how come the high school was an outbreak but the middle school wasn't? And that's when you evaluate all of those situations. You will see that those occurred when we were not in school during the full remote time, or it was done over the Thanksgiving break for that. So as of right now, there are five individuals there at the middle school that have not been cleared to return yet. They are still in isolation per their CDC requirements. And then we have one individual at Carl J. Lamb School and one individual at Margaret Chase Smith School that they have not been cleared to be able to return to school yet. In the meantime, we continue to work on as far as people in school following all of our safety precautions. As I mentioned, I'm very proud of our people in school regarding our students and our staff in terms of following those precautions. We've been very vigilant with those, people doing their symptom checks. All-time high in terms of the people reporting those, so it's less people that we have to follow up with, with our school nurses. With that, we also, late last week, the Maine CDC provided an update policy on the required length of quarantine for an individual determined to be a close contact of a positive COVID-19 case. It was previously established that a 14-day period. They have shortened that to a 10-day period. And the policy remains that a negative test result cannot shorten that quarantine for close contacts even at 10 with that. So we are being very cautious in following that. A big thank you to our school nurses, our administrators. They're really doing a great job. I know it was a busy day, even though our last student day prior to Thanksgiving was Tuesday, the 24th. There was a lot of action going on Wednesday, the 25th in terms of action that we had to be able to come back and research. So a big thank you there to, as I said, our nurses and administrators as we continue to navigate and work our way through. Any questions on COVID-19? One thing I do want to highlight is I have received a number of probably anonymous letters and emails talking about people, kind of ratting out people who are not following the precautions. A lot of that happens maybe outside the school, the community. And at the same time, even though that's not our purview, I want to continue just to point that out to all people that make sure that we are being as safe as we can because as hard as it is out there right now, what we're doing in school is safe. And we want to continue the best we can to have in-person learning where it's safe. For us to be able to do that, we want to make sure that people are following those guidelines. So another reminder and a big thank you to the people who are.
Nice point, Matt. Amy actually has a question. Amy?
And Matt, I, I, I also got those Maine CDC, like the requirements, just I think because I was a nurse today with my license. Is that something that the school? So from now on, if there's a contact at the school, my daughter just was able to return from a contact with the school. So is it now going to be 10 days for the Sanford schools as well? So if there's a contact in the school, it's not 14? As of this week, it's going to be 10?
Yeah, and it is. That's going to go back to Friday, anything after Friday afternoon, last Friday afternoon at 2:00 PM. I did work with the DOE just to get clarification, to see when that 10-day would start. And so what I mean by that is anybody who might have been in for a 14-day quarantine prior to Friday afternoon, they still have to follow through with the 14-day quarantine based on the recommendation from the DOE for that. So yes, we will be going forward from this point that any close contacts, it will now be a 10-day quarantine instead of 14.
Thank you.
Good question, Amy. Anything from anybody else regarding COVID? Not seeing any. Okay, let's move on. Let's go on to the Director's Reports. So Gordy, the floor is yours.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll start if it's okay, Don, to introduce Gordy. Obviously, as we work through COVID, there's always energy around our extracurricular activities and athletics. Gordy came to us and spoke to the school committee back in the fall to kind of outline the plan for the fall and base what had been decided by the CDC, the DOE, and the MPA. So we thought it'd be a good idea also to bring Gordy back to also present what he's doing for the winter to help with that. One second here, I can help work on that. So yeah, I think it's, I want to introduce Gordy. He's got a slideshow that will help with his presentation for people to kind of understand where we are with athletics and what the plan is for athletics going forward. Gordy, are you?
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for having me again tonight. The slideshow, I'm going to get it over here so I can see it. Matt, can you slide that over? Okay, great, thank you. It gives a great short synopsis of where, where we are, what we're trying to do. And we'll move on through it. November 4th, the new winter, new winter sport guideline presented to the MPA Sports Medicine Committee, which I'm a member of. And the MPA Sports Medicine Committee on November 11th released Return to Play Guidelines per sport to the Interscholastic Management Committee for Approval, which is at the MPA and the, and this committee has final say on all of the guidelines or things it has to do with interscholastic high school athletics. So, okay, Matt, November 30th, DOE and DHHS approve winter guidelines and set the dates of December 7th for skills and drills, and December 14th for team participation workouts with no scrimmaging. The games tend to be tentatively to start on January 11th. There's a little, after some states around us had looked at and maybe changed some of their guidelines, on December 4th, Commissioner Lambrou of DOE announced schools can participate in skills and drills in small groups starting on December 7th, but they're going to run it through January 4th with no, with games still tentatively scheduled on January 11th. The change there is that before it was going to go start skills and drills December 7th and team, team participation on December 14th. Now they've extended that to January 14th before team participation can start. The numbers at our indoor gatherings was left unchanged at 50, which will mean no spectators. And games, as I work with Sarah, will be live streamed. So all the sports have listed levels of risk. At this point, we're not offering any sports at a low risk at Sanford High School. A moderate, a medium risk, swimming, basketball, cheering, and ice hockey. And one high risk as in the fall. We had football, this is wrestling, and the MPA, DHHS, DOE have recommended that we look again at wrestling on February 2nd. So they, they can have Zoom meetings with their coaches, but there'll be nothing done in school until we meet again and look at that on February 2nd. So what's the athletic department done to reduce risks? Well, there's a lot, but we put a lot on one pages. All the coaches required to take a National Federation of High School course COVID-19. COVID-19 specific policies, procedures documented written by us, including venue-specific isolation areas. This document, along with other pertinent information given to each coach, they all have a binder that lists all the procedures and policies prior to the beginning of the season. Since November 4th, we've been having frequent meetings to go over all that and to make sure our coaches are all on the same page and have no doubt about what needs to be done before we start the sport season. We've had to adjust practice times and locker room space because one of the things we had to do is that between practices has to be a 15-minute airflow disinfection before we can start the next practice. So the gym will be empty for 15 minutes. We have athletic signage, all the coaches have PPE things. If we get to the games, hopefully in January, every home game, the officials will be screened and game day workers will be screened as well. The schedules, which are not done yet, there's a lot of things still going on before they can get them completed. Working on updating the schedules to compete regionally. We'll be playing in York County and maybe in Cumberland County if the schedules permit and we return to a green designation. Missed one? Yeah, thanks, man. Whoops, nope. Yep, right there, thank you. Our goals and priorities obviously is to provide the safest environment for our students, faculty, staff, and community, aligning with the current and adopted state guidance. Provide the best opportunity for our students to learn outside the traditional classroom and provide opportunities for our students to safely interact with others to accommodate their physical, social, and emotional needs. Some roadblocks that may happen, we worked through all these in the fall, so there's not anything that we can't work through, I believe. But busing availability is, lack of officials. A lot of officials have opted not to officiate this year in various sports because they don't want to wear a mask full-time, feel like that they can't do that. So we're, we're looking at in basketball and not in swim and probably not in wrestling, but especially in basketball, there's a lack of officials for this year. So that will dictate scheduling and the days that we can play and who's playing. We only, right now, the guidelines say in basketball, you can only have two contests a week. So if you get one canceled because of weather, you're probably going to lose that contest unless they extend it so we can have another game during that week. Getting remote learners, hybrid learners, making it back, making it to school on the day they do not have in-person classes. As I mentioned, poor, poor weather, and it's always an issue. I feel badly about not being able to have fans at the games, and I wish we could do something different. But at this point, that is a direct order from the governor and the DOE and the DHHS of not having more than 50 people in the gym. So, and as all, and as always, traveling, we must follow the executive order on travel and rules. So we're still getting numbers. One of the things we found through the fall and even now, kids are slow to sign up because they're looking at, maybe we're going to play, maybe we're not. But we've done everything, we get the numbers out. These are what projected numbers we've had and an average in the past. So those are what we expect, but we are currently still having kids sign up and will till we can start tryouts. Where do we go from here? We have to await the governor's, the CDC decision on when York County will return to a green designation. As you know, we're all in yellow. Keep communicating to the athletes with a code through the coaches and families on return-to-play protocols. We're working, Nate Man and I are working to address middle school activities and how we're going to handle the winter and where, where we'll follow the, probably the same procedures and model that we use in the fall to provide those kids with opportunities to be able to participate and get them games at the end of the season. And because, you know, people are a little leery about coming in, we're planning bringing kids from outside the community to play, hiring enough game personnel to run the athletic contests is a little bit of a struggle, but we'll figure it out. These are things, the things the kids need to do before we return to athletics. They're pretty used to them after the fall. You know, the one, the change, big thing changed from the fall is we're indoors, so we have to wear masks 100% of the time, whether we're practicing or competing in a game. And the... And the use of locker rooms is gonna be different. Kids, if they're in school, will be able to change, but bring all their things out from the locker room and will not be able to return to the locker room. So there, you know, we've gone over with coaches about proper clothing to wear after you're done practicing and no matter if you're swimming or you're at hockey or you're wrestling, all those things that we need to do to provide a safe and to mitigate all the things we need to do to provide a safe environment for our kids and coaches and everybody else in the school. Hand sanitizers, six feet apart, washing your clothes daily and reminding kids they have to sign up on family ID before they can start. This is just, this is just a copy of the questions we ask the kids, the coaches have to ask the kids every day, just like when we have to sign in. Kids will get asked in the morning at school, but before they start practice, they have to be asked all these questions and we record all their answers. This is one of the ways we will keep track of it. It's for the month of, say, December or January, the athlete's name will obviously down the side and they'll ask the kids if they had to answer yes to any of those questions. And if they do, a why will be put in there if they answer yes. And then the athletic trainers will be called immediately and they will be taken to the isolation room with the trainer and the parents will be called immediately. And then we would follow up with Mr. Peterman and Mr. Nelson and the, and the school nurse. So they will, all those CDC guidelines will be followed. And at the end of the season or the end of that month, they have to turn those into me and so we can keep them. If there's ever a question about a kid, then we have that information readily available for, to answer the question accurately. And this is where we are, yellow means red. Right now, we cannot participate in any athletic things after school. And so we're not, everybody else in our league in Cumberland County started today. So we cannot do anything until we return back to green. Our coaches will be ready because it gets a little hairy on a Friday because they announced it on a Friday sometimes later than I would want them to. I wish we get the information earlier, but and then to give all the information to the coaches and to the kids that we would be starting on Monday, that following Monday. So right now, unfortunately, we're in yellow and until that changes, we cannot participate. They'll take any questions.
I think just before Gordy takes questions, I think one of the things we wanted to do was present the school committee with the plan as it pertains to athletics for us going forward, just to see if there's any concerns with that or anything that we'd wanna do differently or pump the brakes. If not, that'll be our plan in terms of how we plan to navigate athletics for the winter season.
What I'd add, Matt, that, I mean, we followed like all of these guidelines, the fall coaches and the kids were unbelievable and we didn't miss a beat with any of that. We didn't have one case here in the fall because of the great job the kids and the coaches did. And so, you know, indoors presents another challenge because outdoors, obviously the fields, you can spread them out a little more, but I expect that we're gonna be fine and we will do everything we can given all the policies and procedures and the coaches know. And we'll continue to meet to go over those until we start to make sure we make it as safe as we can for the kids.
But I think you did a great job, Gordy, much like in the fall. I think it's good to put this out there and so folks can understand just how much effort goes into, you know, making these activities happen, you know, for the kids. I think we all understand how important it is for them to be able to get out there and do something. I mean, it might not be exactly what they're used to or what they wanna get done, but we're doing what we can to make it available. So, good work, Gordy.
Thanks. I would just like to add, tomorrow morning, I have another Sports Medicine Committee meeting. And I know we talk about that, I was a big advocate in sports medicine to get the main music association involved with us and they now part of that committee. So our meeting tomorrow is mostly on the agenda about how we're gonna get the kids and safely back this winter with music. So I'm looking forward to that, be able to report that back to our music department.
Oh, that's exciting.
Good luck, Gordy. Hope everything goes well.
Thank you.
Like to see something happen for the kids.
We'll make it as good as we can, given all the circumstances. I think we'll have games and be able to compete at some level for each sport and get it figured out so it happens.
Good.
Any other questions or comments for Gordy? Yeah, once again, great job, Gordy.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
I just asked one thing, Gordy.
Yeah.
When you mentioned that you and Nate Man, we're gonna be talking about the middle school, will there, like, if, let's just say we magically turn green, is there gonna be a delay in starting the middle school or will they be able to start when the high school starts?
We're hoping to start at the same time as the high school and provide, depending on how many kids actually can get there who are remote that day. But we will have a plan in place. We've already met a couple of times and Nate and I are gonna meet before the end of the week to try to figure that out. So we're ready to roll when the high school rolls.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good question, Amy. Okay, so now we're moving on to the Mises data. Once Matt said that this was real data intense earlier, I'm sure everyone got super excited for it. Is this Steve?
Yeah, good evening, guys. Tonight, you're gonna hear about the Sanford's results from the 2019 Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey. Just to give you a little bit of background, the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey, known as MIASS, was first administered back in 2009. And it's offered in February in off calendar years, so 2009, 2011, which brings us to 2019. It's a collaboration between the Maine Department of Health and Human Services and the Maine Department of Education. And the real purpose is to put some numbers in regards to some health-related behaviors and attitudes of students in grades five through 12. This evening, we have some folks here who are gonna present the data to you. Some of these folks are familiar. First off, we have Brent Corman, who's our outreach worker at Sanford Middle School and Sanford High School. We have Caitlin Malloy, who is the Outreach Coordinator of Substance Abuse Prevention with the Partners for Healthier Community, SMAC. We also have Nicole Ivy, who formerly held that position and is currently the Adult Education Director. And Beth Laterno, a familiar face to all of you, the High School Director of Counseling. And so I will turn it over to Brent and can everybody see the screen, I hope?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, take it away, guys.
Okay, so thanks for having us. And like Steve said, this, or Mr. Boos here said, this is data that's a result of the work that the Department of Health and Human Services and Maine Department of Education have collaborated on and is possibly brought to you and administered within our schools because of the work and partnerships that we have with Partners for Healthier Community, Southern Maine Healthcare, and Strategies for a Stronger Sanford. We did have to make some adjustments with our presenters tonight. Caitlin Malloy, who is the Outreach Coordinator, did have to dismiss herself. She has something to attend to, so luckily we have Nicole Ivy and Beth Laterno, great teammates in this process as well. And I apologize for any disorganization that does occur as a result of that. So we're gonna do the best we can to get that data presented to you tonight in an orderly fashion. But what I'd like to do is, like Mr. B had said, that Nicole Ivy had taken this on quite a while ago and this has been her baby, so to speak, for the past years. And I'm gonna hand it off to her just to kind of talk a little bit about this data and what you're, what to expect for tonight.
All right, thanks, Brent. Can I just, who was advancing the slides? Is that you, Steve?
Yes, me.
Okay, great. Can you advance to the next slide, please?
Oh, sure.
So this slide really just gives an overview of how many students responded in each of the years. As Steve mentioned, the MEHAS has been taken by students in grades six through 12 since 2009. It was previously the Midos, which really was specific to drugs and alcohol. And then at that time, I think it was 2013, the DOE and DHHS joined forces to sort of reduce survey fatigue and that's what gave us the MEHAS. But a lot of this questions around substance use were similar or the exact same so that we had consistency of data. And so these are just, you can see the number of junior high respondents, the number of high school respondents. Next slide, please. So this slide really just goes over current use. This is past 30-day use. We know that 30-day use is an indicator of, or a good indicator of future use. And so we use these numbers to predict student behavior. I apologize, I didn't create these slides, so I'm trying to orient myself to what this data looks like as well. The red lines here are Sanford High School and then the following gray is how we correlate to the state. And then the blue is a junior high and then that greenish color is, again, how we relate to the state. So you can see we're pretty in line with the state, with the exception of, we obviously see that outlier at the high school with prescription drugs misuse. We'll go over that in a future slide, but you can see we're about double the state average there, in line pretty much everywhere else for the most part. And a quick note here, there is a question about tobacco, but that doesn't include vape. It doesn't specifically ask about vape on the survey. And so we don't have any Sanford-level data, nothing that granular, but we do have statewide data. So something to be thinking about when we're asking about tobacco, youth are not seeing it in that way, like this is vape, it's juice, it's, you know, whatever cool terms they have.
We do hope to see more questions in future surveys around vaping. So that is to come, get more data from that.
So we are slightly above the average in marijuana use in Sanford, 24% versus 22% at the state level. Nothing really statistically different, other than prescription drug use at the high school, 9% versus 5%. So in a conversation with Matt Peterman earlier in the week, they have roughly 1,100 kids, so doing out the math, you're looking at around 110 kids reporting that in the last 30 days, they have misused prescription drugs. That question is pretty specific and outlines exactly what they're referring to, which is Vicodin, Oxycodone, Oxycontin, and a few others as well. Alcohol, we are seeing a nice decrease and we have, I wish we had, I had previously another iteration of this, we had like this sort of longitudinal look at the data and alcohol since 2009 really has been steadily decreasing, which is exciting. We want to see that. The same with tobacco as well. Unfortunately, we know as tobacco has decreased, we've also seen vape increase. So I use the analogy all the time, it feels a bit like whack-a-mole, like we sort of are able to attack one substance, but then we see another rise. And really, what we've been trying to do in Sanford over the last, you know, dozen or so years is look at causation and sort of why youth are using, which we'll get into in a later slide as well. This is junior high school. So the previous slide was high school, this is junior high. Current use rates, again, nothing statistically relevant that's out of line with the state. Not to minimize the data, it's, I mean, we would obviously want to see all these numbers at zero, but I think when we're looking for our own sake, we definitely want to be looking at where is Sanford different than surrounding areas in York County? Where is it different than the state and where do we need to target specifically what's happening in our community? And Brent, did you wanna?
I'll jump into risk factors. So what do we know to be contributing risk factors to youth at risk? When we talk about risk factors in terms of youth substance use, we are talking about characteristics of physical and social environment, environmental environment that increases likelihood that an adolescent will engage in potentially harmful behaviors. The MEHAS captures data on most risk factors, which helps educators, prevention specialists, and the community implement best practice interventions to decrease the rates of substance use. So this is one of the bigger reasons we're presenting this data to our community is to not, not just bring out any negative influences or negative things happening in the community, but ways we can make change in our community. And that can include prevention specialists such as Caitlin Malloy. We've had Nicole Ivy in the past. So partnering with these community partners to make those changes. We'll go to the next slide. That is, okay, sorry. So this is marketing, social media, how are youth are targeted? Teens, they're influenced by technology, advertisement, social media, sports teams, celebrities, and individuals in their own community. So for $1, $1 the alcohol industry spends on youth advertising, youth drink, or youth drinking alcohol increases 3%. So although Maine does not, does have regulations about advertisements, we don't see billboards in Maine, which are good. Like in industry, marijuana companies find ways to attract young buyers. And if you look at some of these pictures, you can see that, you know, vape pens and vape pods are using Hello Kitty. Sour Patch, obviously that's similar to the Sour Patch Kids candy or, and they call it Stony Patch. And the other picture is just a, you know, a celebrity that's influencing our youth. So the movies we watch and what they do in real life matter and how they influence our teens. So these are just some of the examples of how youth are targeted.
Really, my main takeaway here is just norming, community norming. If you think that it's, you know, normal to use, if it's okay to use, it's acceptable to use, they're more likely, they're going home every night and dad's having a beer to unwind, or mom's having a glass of wine to relax from a stressful day, like those are conversations that we don't even realize as parents that we're having, but that's a conversation in itself. I think really parent modeling is shown to be like the number one most important either protective factor or risk factor in a child's life, depending on what the behavior is.
So the next slide is perception of harm with marijuana specifically. So the lines you're looking at, this, so this is a percent of, percent of students that answered no risk or slight risk. The red line is Sanford High School and the one below that is Sanford Junior High School. The data does not mean that, that youth are increasing their use. It's the perception of harm is decreasing. So we want to see these numbers lower. We are seeing at Sanford High School a slight increase at 69%. So we're above the state average at 67%. And at the junior high school, also known as the middle school now, we did see a decrease since 2017. And compared to the state, we're right in line at 38%. And if you notice in 2017 to 2019, there was a slight decrease. I'd like to think that that's a lot of the interventions and prevention work that's happening in the community and in the schools that caused that slight decrease. I'd like to see that number go down even further at the high school and the middle school in the future. So also looking at some of the timeline here from 2009 to now, there were some dates that were, I think, impacted these numbers a little bit. And May of 2009 is when Maine decriminalized marijuana, so you'll start to see an increase there. November of 2013, voters in Portland passed legalization of possession at 2.5 ounces. And then in 2016, the Marijuana Legalization Act permitted people to grow, particularly those who are caretakers. So we are seeing an increase of growers in Sanford community. And then one more data point, and between 2011 and 2013, at the junior high, you'll notice that's a big spike. Around that time is when technology was being used more often, social media. So we think that that definitely influenced that spike as well. So that is marijuana. We'll move on to the next one. So brain development and youth marijuana use. So to many, it's not a surprise that our youth between the ages of 13 and 20 is the prime time for your brain to develop. Any substance you put into your body can affect that development and marijuana does affect the development of the frontal lobe. And this is an important part of the brain because it's what controls impulse control and good judgment. And early onset use can be a pathway to addiction, which could, at an early age, definitely affect that development of the brain and cause long-term challenges down the road, not only addiction, but functionality socially and being able to control those impulses. So it can affect a lot of areas of one's life if using early and if affecting the brain development.
Yeah, just so, sorry, just to interject there really briefly, Brent. So we know statistically- So we know statistically that youth who use substances before the age of 15 are six times as likely to develop a substance use disorder at some point in their lives. That's really, for me, is just a stark data point when thinking about, you know, a child, really, a child, right? At 10, 11, 12, 13 years old, making a decision that can have lifelong impacts. And so it's really critical as educators, as administrators, et cetera, et cetera, as community members, to really understand that vape isn't just vape. It's not just vape. To some kids, it may be, but do we want to take the chance, right? And so just continuing not only to educate, but to continue to dig down into like, what are the root causes of youth substance use?
I would add as well, Nicole and Brent, to this is that what we know about the brain and its development is that, as we've gone over in this slide, when someone starts using, especially in early adolescence, those effects are felt long-term, I think. And probably most of us have known someone who started to use in early adolescence, and it occurs to you that person really never grew up. You now are meeting a 40- or 50-year-old that still seems like a kid. And that really is rooted in this brain science that we just went over.
So access to marijuana. So I do want to point out just some of the previous mentions of implementing growers, caretakers. Look at those specific dates of legalization of possession. Really, I think increased the accessibility within Sanford and the state of Maine. But at Sanford High School, we're seeing access to marijuana is equal to high school students statewide at 53%. So accessibility increased by 2% based on what our students reported. At the junior high, 22% of junior high school students reported that marijuana is easily accessible, 6% higher than the state, state average at 16%. Accessibility has increased 3% at the junior high. So thinking about parental perceptions. So how are students view their parents' perception? 20 or 23% of Sanford High School students believe their parents would not find it a little wrong or not wrong at all if they used marijuana. That's 3% higher compared to high school students statewide at 20%. 6% of Sanford Junior High School students believe their parents would not find it a little wrong or not wrong at all if they used marijuana. And that's a little bit below state, which is at 7%. So we're seeing some increase here and how their parents see their use. So we'd like to see some changes there as well. Going to the next one. Perception of harm at alcohol. How much do you think people risk harming themselves physically or in other ways if they have one to two drinks of alcohol, beverage nearly every day? So the percentage of students that answered none or slight risk. So we're going back to 2017, at 17%, to the high school to now. We're seeing a 2% increase there. And then, let's see, sorry. The high school, 2017. I think that's supposed to be Sanford Junior High School. Am I reading this wrong, Nicole?
I'm sorry, I didn't create the slides. I'm not sure what the, yeah. But we want lower numbers here because these are the students who are answering that there's no risk or slight risk. So we want, obviously, people to think that there's great risk involved with using or drinking alcohol, one or two drinks every single day. Again, though, we're pretty much in line with the state. You know, if you do all the numbers. I'm not sure if you have more to add there, Brent?
No, I don't, sorry, this wasn't, this wasn't my slide.
That's okay.
We'll go on to the next one.
Yeah, so I think this is super, super data-heavy, and I just want to like pull out for a second. Really, when we're talking about youth use, there are four core measures that we are talking about. The one is past 30-day use, which we covered. Another is perception of harm. So if you think that a substance is harmful to them, they're less likely to use it. And then the other is parental perception. And so if they think that their parents think that it's wrong, they're less likely to use. And then the last is peer perception. If they think that their friends think that it's okay or cool. The parent piece, when we are having these conversations, are always interesting. One data point that I mentioned earlier was there are all these conversations that we're not having by modeling and thinking, oh, yeah, like, my kids know not to use, but it's okay for me. That's, you know, do as I say, not as I do does not work. And Beth can talk more to that, but it doesn't work. The other piece to that too is we are talking about junior high and high school students. And so there are some layers there too. Mom or dad or aunt or grandma or, you know, dad might think that they've had the conversation, and the youth perception of that conversation might be very, very different. And so just some things to be thinking about as we're talking through these points.
So this is access to alcohol. So a positive here is that students report a lower rate of someone furnishing alcohol to them compared to Maine statewide average of 36% in 2017. However, 30% of high school students initiated alcohol use before the age of 13, which is significantly higher, which is significantly higher compared to 24% of high school students statewide. This is really important because we know the earlier teens start drinking, the more likely they are to develop a substance use disorder down the road, as we mentioned before. So in looking at this, 48% of students at the high school answered access. Report access to alcohol from someone giving it to them, 21% from the junior high, and 30% of Sanford High School students initiated alcohol use before the age of 13. This rate is significantly higher compared to 24%. Go to the next one. Perception of harm of prescription medications. So 19% of Sanford High School students believe they would face a slight or no risk of harming themselves when using a prescription medication that was not prescribed to them. So what's important is that the question that was asked on this survey was specific in stating that the prescription was not prescribed to them. Because that could be a question that pops up. People might ask, well, what if it's about a prescription they are taking? So the question here was pretty specific. Perception of harm regarding prescription medications is significantly higher within Sanford High School students compared to high school students statewide at 19%. It's important to again note that Sanford High School students reported a significantly higher rate of prescription medication use in the last 30 days compared to the Maine high school students statewide.
So we talked as a group as we were preparing for this presentation. I think all of us were a bit taken back by this data point, especially being in the community and understanding that we really have been in the throes of an opiate epidemic in our community since 2014 or so. And really, I think that our group thought that youth would pick up on that and feel like, oh, that's bad, right? Like, that's incredibly harmful. And so to see this data point sort of decreasing of students thinking that it's harmful and use increasing is concerning.
Go to the next slide, and that is access to prescription medications. I think we talked a little bit about this. 19% of Sanford High School students think there's no risk or only a slight risk of taking prescription drug that was not prescribed to them. 12% of the state of Maine students agree. So we're above state average on this one. 16% of high school students in Maine say it would be easy to get a prescription drug. Go to the next slide. In this slide, I was, I'm glad it was included with our LGBTQ communities. What we're looking at here is data compared for the LGBTQ communities' use compared to those respondents. I'm not going to go through every piece on here, but what the data is showing is that this community has a much higher rate than those who responded. Some examples are 13% of LGBTQ students have smoked a cigarette at least once in the past 30 days compared to 6% of non-LGBTQ students. 27% LGBTQ students have had alcohol and compare that to 23% of non-LGBTQ students. And then prescription drugs, 8% compared to 4%. Use of cocaine at 6% versus 3%. So we see an indicator here that this population, their use is much higher than those respondents.
I do want to just direct your attention to that this, that was statewide data, so not Sanford-specific. Still statistically relevant to us, but not Sanford-specific.
And I think Beth will talk more a little bit on suicidality amongst our population. I also want to mention, in addition to the LGBTQ community, they hold the highest numbers of attempts and suicidal ideation compared to others in the state.
Hi, thank you. So at Sanford High School, related to feeling depressed or sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks. In 2017, it was 28%. The most recent data we have is 40 compared to statewide at 32. So you can see that's statistically significant. At the middle school, 22% of students have seriously thought about killing themselves. Our next piece of data is related to bullying. 34% of Sanford High School students report being bullied on school property in the past year. And at the middle school, 58% of students report being bullied on school property last year. And that is an increase of 10% from the year previous. In addition, to go back to the suicidal ideation, 24% of Sanford High School students have seriously thought about killing themselves compared to statewide average of 16%. Also statistically significant. So, you know, in my role, oh, can you go back to that one, Steve? Sorry. Obviously, this data is concerning specifically, well, both pieces, the bullying and obviously the suicidal ideation. I think we should also be concerned, obviously, around post-COVID data, what this data is going to look like after COVID. I did pull an article from Education Week. And nationally, between March and October, mental health crisis, visits to the ER increased 24% for kids ages 5 to 11 and 31% for adolescents 12 to 17, March through October this year. And that's national data, not specific to York County or even to Maine, but I would imagine that we fall within the same realm with kids feeling helpless and hopeless. Next piece, please. We look at ACEs, that stands for adverse childhood experiences. And this is traumatic or potentially traumatic events that occur in childhood between 0 and 17. I would imagine all of us tonight have experienced at some point in our life, potentially at least one ACE. But there's a lot more, there's a strong connection between adverse childhood experiences and not just, and trauma into adulthood, and also even medical concerns into adulthood. So what we know is that students with four or more ACEs are more statistically significant to smoke cigarettes, use alcohol, or be bullied. And about 1 in 5 Maine high school students has four or more. I would dare to argue, if we got specific data for Sanford Public Schools, that we would find that closer to at least 1 in 4 of our kids had four or more ACEs or maybe worse. I know recently, bringing my young children in for a regular doctor's appointment, one of the screenings they do at the local pediatrician is an ACEs screening. And that, I think, is happening statewide, but also nationwide, so that doctors and nurses can look at how kids are being affected by trauma in their home and also to be able to reach out and get support. In addition, our school social worker had even spoken in the fall, when we did our back-to-school meeting with our staff, around the potential of them considering, encouraging them to check in with the kids in their class and do an anonymous survey about what their ACEs are. Not for them to pick on a particular kid and what level of trauma it is that they have, but for the teachers to know who's sitting in front of them in their classroom. Are they teaching a group of kids who have five or more ACEs at 50%? And what kind of trauma those kids have been through for us to work on our trauma-informed practices for when we're working with kids? Thank you. Next slide. And if we look at ACE and substance use, obviously, a connection between the higher the ACE score, the more likely to be using substances. 21% of Maine high school students in York County have four or more ACEs. I wish we could break this data down specific to Sanford High School. My guess is that would be definitely higher than 21%. But York County compiles, obviously, all the schools in York County, not just our schools specifically. But you can look at how much likely they are used to do tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, and also reporting to have been bullied.
So the ACEs data was supposed to be on this 2021 survey, and the state decided not to administer due to COVID. So unfortunately, we won't get that level of specificity for Sanford and for, well, until they decide to do the survey again.
Thank you. So ACEs and mental health. Students with four or more ACEs and frequent support from non-parental adults were less likely to consider suicide. So what's important to know is that just because you have a lot of ACEs and those are given to you, you know, outside of your realm of control as a child, it does not mean that all hope is lost. How important it is on this specific statistic around non-parental adults that you are connected to. So kids with four or more ACEs but had frequent support from non-parental adults, teachers, administrators, coaches, Boy Scout troop leaders, et cetera. 30% of students with support compared to 41% of students with non-support from a non-parental adult. So you can see how much that difference it makes and how much a difference it makes to kids in their lives to have that support. Also, oops, sorry, Steve, can you just go back to that slide? Thanks. The important thing for me too, at the bottom, is thinking about that their school cares about kids as a protective factor, right? So do kids feel like they are cared about at school? Do people know their name? Do they look at them in the eye? Do they greet them by name? Do they have maybe a special nickname that they kid around with them in the hallway? You know, for those particular kids, they, you might be the only person in their day that greets them with a smile. And so it's important for all of us. What we know is that the most difficult kids that we work with at school are the kids that need our love the most. And so at times, they can be trying, but we remember in the end, there's a large outcome, and they can make the most gains in terms of resiliency. Thanks, Steve, next one. So students with four or more ACEs are significantly more likely to experience depression and have considered, seriously considered suicide. Strong, familiar love and support is a protective factor against suicide with kids with four or more ACEs. An important way to prevent ACEs and toxic stress is to build protective factors in kids. Protective factors are like a shield to protect kids from ACEs and to build resiliency. So when we look at how do we build those protective factors in kids? We can't change their ACE score from what they have grown up with or are facing. But family support, do they feel like they matter in their community? Do they have a sense of belonging in high school? Whether they're part of the anime club, the band, the basketball team, peer helpers, Bella, I gave that special shout-out to you. I know you appreciate that. And they have two or more adults in their life that care about them. And that's outside of their family home. So maybe it's a teacher, maybe it's a boss at the grocery store, something like that. And do they feel safe and protected at home as an adult? So positive note, 75% of Sanford High School and Sanford Junior High School students agree that at least one of their teachers really cares about them and gives them the support that they need. 73% of high school students and 81% of junior high school students receive a love and support from their family most or all of the time. And again, this is student perception. Often, how does one of your parents talk to you about what you're doing in school? This part was disappointing, especially at the high school level. 75% of Sanford High School kids report that one of their parents talks to them about how they're doing in school about once a day or about once a week versus 84% of middle school. The statewide average is 82% at the high school level. So why we know that's important, right? Kids, and many of you have raised teenagers. I'm in the throes of elementary and preschool myself, but they don't often want to talk to you about how your day is going, right? They want to sort of say, it was fine, and move on. But what they do know is that they know that you care. And when you ask, that they know that you're involved and you want to see how their day is going. And they may kind of give you a grunt four out of 10 days during, when you ask that question, but eventually, they may say, actually, today was a rough day. Or, I learned something really interesting in my sociology class that I want to mention, but they know that you care. 46% of Sanford High School students agree that they feel like they matter to their community compared to 57%. And 62% of Sanford Junior High School students agree that they feel like they matter compared to 59% of middle school students statewide. I know we've mentioned when we've given this presentation before that this present, this MEHAS survey was given on the heels of Challenge Day at the middle school. And so our hope is that some of that love and positivity helps to influence kids about feeling really important and loved in their community. feeling really important and loved in their community. At the high school level, we do a variety of things, from This Is Us to handing out candy canes in the morning, to a variety of different things, to different clubs and organizations, but we can see that we definitely still have some room for improvement, improvement in having kids really feel like they matter in their community.
I did want to mention, too, Beth, the junior high data point, we saw from 2017 to 2019, there was roughly a 10% increase, a huge jump. And Beth had mentioned that the Challenge Day that year happened in January, and then this survey was administered in February. So when she said we were on the heels, like, we were literally weeks after Challenge Day, and to see such a significantly relevant jump, I think that we can deduce that that likely was a result.
I would say, too, just before I turn the mic over, is that, you know, there are some things that we can continue to do at the middle school, elementary and high school level, K-12 level, is, you think about those, keeping it simple, right? The three Rs, relationships, rigor, and relevance, really? And the biggest thing is really relationships. If you don't really like math, but you really like your math teacher, that makes all the difference, right? How we can continue to work with staff, trauma-informed, climate and culture, and social-emotional learning, right? We think about those soft skills that we always hear employees talking to us about, it's the eye contact, a firm handshake, post-COVID, obviously, right? That they're really looking for students to be able to have, to be able to show up to work on time, to be able to make relationships with people. And those are things we'll, we are working on and will continue to work on, K-12 through the school counseling department, as well as with our teachers.
If you wouldn't mind skipping this one, Steve, and go to the next one, and we'll come back to it. Should have moved that one. So, community-wide initiatives, so it's a great segue into what Beth was just talking about, and obviously, we're not presenting this data to say what the schools can do more of. I think it takes a team, and it takes the schools and the community, and the community providers and agencies within it to make change, and this is why we're bringing this data to you, to focus in on where we're seeing challenges and where we need to make focus to change. And we've done that with PHC or Partners for Healthier Community Strategies and SMHC, and that's just an example of how this data can help bring in programming, bring in agencies, bring in individuals that want to make this change. And how are our community partners doing that? Well, what they're doing is they're providing education in our schools, to our staff, students, and using this specific data to target that, those trainings and interventions. So they're also providing what's called the SERP, which is the Student Intervention Reintegration Program, just targeted at students that are typically in the beginning stages of use, and it's really a great prevention model and education for our students. And linking resources to not only our educators, but to our school staff, to our parents. I know at the high school and the middle school, there's a lot of guest speakers that come in that our community partners help provide around substance use, around bullying. Beth, you have all kinds, you have a monthly theme, even at the middle school, of what areas we want to focus on, and having those guest speakers is really important. So, and then there's trainings, such as ACEs. So Beth was talking about ACEs and providing some of those trainings for those. So there's a lot going on in our community, and definitely, we could implement more. More is better, so we hope to do that going forward. If you could go to the next slide. And I, just in talking about what's going on in our community, I wanted to provide a list of just some of what's happening. I'm sure I'm missing some things on here, but we have our Backpack Program, we have Challenge Day, or Be the Change, This Is Us Movement, and we want to thank all those individuals for this year, making those adjustments with Be the Change to make it happen for everybody, and I think it was really impactful. Then we have our Parks and Recreation, the IMCA, offering a lot of resources right around now. I talked about the SERP, and appliance checks, we have Day One, we have school-based counselors in our schools, so feel free to look through these and, you know, look them up, learn more about them, because they're doing a lot of work for our students and families. So we'll go back to Slide 24. So important data points to take away. I just want to reiterate that this is data that was collected before COVID-19. I think right now, we have a, we could have a great opportunity to collect even more important data. Unfortunately, like Nicole mentioned, that they're not going to administer the Mihas this year, which I wish they would, because I think we're, we could get a lot of great info and qualitative and quantitative data that would drive us in another direction of where we need to focus, because I think, I may speak for everyone in this meeting, that we're already seeing where some of the challenges are for our students and families, and we're seeing a lot of anxiety, increased substance use. So I think we're already in the area of where we need to make the change, but having that data would be a really, really good thing. But in addition, with points taken away, 9% of Sanford students believe their parents would feel that it was not wrong at all, or a little wrong for them to have one to two drinks of alcohol. This rate is significantly higher than high school students at 6%. 30% of high school students initiated alcohol use before age 13. Rates of prescription medication misuse reported by high school students is significantly higher, almost two times higher than the Maine State average. Perception of harm regarding prescription medications is significantly higher. 11% of high school students reported using inhalants at least once to get high. This rate is also significantly higher, and Sanford High students reported lower rates of all protective factors compared to high school students statewide. So these are just some of the data points to take away with, and ones that we're going to focus on in implementing any programs, agency initiatives, and continuing to work with our community partners that helped bring this presentation to you. So with that, Beth and Nicole, jump on with any other points to take away.
Yeah, I think just the last piece I wanted to share with the group is that substance use prevention is no longer like the egg in the frying pan, right? Like, this is your brain on drugs. Like, it's not, we're not looking at scare tactics anymore, we're not looking at scared straight and all these fearful types of campaigns. We're really looking to support kids in a more realistic way, and really have the conversation of what's happening for them in their lives, because that's the driver of use. I, as Steve and Brent mentioned earlier, I was the Director of the Drug-Free Communities Grant for many years, almost eight years, before coming into this role with the school department, and I had a lot of conversations with kids during that time, really, really insightful and impactful conversations that really helped to shape this work in Sanford. And time and time again, I heard, it's not because I want to be cool, I don't want to feel this, and when I take this, I don't feel this. And sort of seeing those, that level of use be modeled as a coping mechanism, it's a life management strategy, right? Like, where other people might work out, or might do yoga, or might read, or do art, or other things, like, this becomes a life management strategy. And so how do you handle your life? How do you handle stress? How do you handle feelings of anxiety, et cetera, et cetera, without the use of substances? For some people, that's not really an option, or they feel as though it's not an option. And so I think, really, something that I was, I had chatted with Matt a bit about, when we were preparing for this conversation as well, was just everything the school's been doing, and really focusing on social-emotional learning, trauma-informed care, trauma-informed practices, having people speaking that same language and understanding how to work with kids in a way that's humanistic, in a way that's understanding of their circumstances and sort of what their goals and outcomes are. The school's doing a lot, and I think the community is also doing a lot, but there's always room for us to continue to strategize on how we can partner to a greater degree.
Yeah, and I would just add, Nicole, you know, hearing, looking at this data can be pretty overwhelming and pretty defeating, and I think for us to consider, you know, the idea of progress, not perfection, right? And like, we are making progress in some areas, and we're going to continue to work hard at this. You know, COVID has obviously brought its own set of challenges in a wide variety of ways, but our kids are worth it, and no matter what, the biggest thing that's going to help kids feel better about themselves and feel better about school is relationships. And so we're lucky that so many kids feel like they have good relationships, but we also have a percentage of kids that don't feel like they have that. And so for us, it's a challenge to continue to reach those kids that we're not able to reach, and to continue to work at making our school system, right, K-12, be a place where kids feel hope, kids feel wanted, kids feel liked, kids feel included. And I think a lot of kids feel that way, but we can continue to work on having more kids feel that way as well.
All right, and with that, I don't know if we have time, Steve, for questions? If anybody had any questions in regards to what we presented?
We always have time for questions.
Sure.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you guys for taking the time to put this out. It is a lot of information. Sadly, I don't know as though there's anything in there that was very surprising. I remember when I was on the school committee my first term, seemed like there were kind of these same discussions. I just wonder, as you're going through all this, I'm thinking to myself, you know, you say the school's doing a lot already, and, you know, COVID's going to make it even worse going in next year. Is there anything, as we start getting into budget season, we're talking resources, you know, what would you guys like to see happen going into next year?
Well, if I could-
Was that too hard a question, Brett?
No, no, I think if I'm stepping into my role as an outreach worker, and a lot of the restorative work we do around those who violate substance use violations and getting them connected, I'm always, always looking to bring in more, more for our teens and youth around substance use, and that being counseling or any agencies providing that. So since I started, it's always been a challenge to find availability, though we do have Day One, which is an agency that provides that, and there are private practitioners that do provide it in our, in our community. I just think, we just don't have enough. We need more, we need more of that in our community. So I'll continue to reach out and try to advocate for that.
I would add, too, obviously, we know it's going to be a difficult budget season. In February, during, we believe, School Counselor Week, which I'm sure everyone has already set their calendar for, the first week of February, the school counselors, K-12, will be presenting to the school board, and, you know, it's important to know, the American Association of School Counselors, that the recommendation is 250 students per counselor, and I like to look at that nationwide. I think when you're in a school district that has a lot of tough situations, I would recommend that number be lower. I think also, it's important to have people in the right places to be able to collaborate, and also to be planful, and be able to be in positions where they can coordinate big-picture things for K-12, for the school, for the district, to make sure that kids are getting equal access at all of our elementary schools, at the middle school, at the high school, so that our kids are really leaving school, leaving Sanford Public Schools with a great social-emotional learning curriculum, with a great, you know, there's three standards to American school counseling, it's academic, career, and social-emotional. And so those three things are what gives kids hope, right? Academically, that you're on target or as close to target that you're going to be able to be. Career, that you have a plan for after high school, right? And we're starting to do those things, even with 4th graders, we're planning a career day, where high school kids are helping to coordinate kind of their plans for after high school, and how Sanford Schools help them get that way, and also social-emotionally, right? For kids, if you're not being able to have coping skills and managing anger and frustration modeled to you at home, how can those things be modeled to you in school? How can those skills be taught to you? You know, when my 3-year-old is throwing a fit at home, I repeat to myself as a parent, little kids, little problems, big kids, big problems, right? Today, it's a cookie and wanting a cookie at breakfast, and tomorrow, it's substance use, right? And how am I modeling to my kids at home, to my own children, about the importance of being substance-free, and also learning those techniques to avoid substance when it's being offered to you? And so for me, it's the coordination around that that I think is really important, as well as being aware of the national standard, 250 children per school counselor, but also being aware of who we are serving in this community. And I can say that because I live in this community, and my kids go to school in this community. And so there's nothing that I'm more passionate about than the social-emotional, academic, and post-secondary planning of all of our kids.
Hey, Beth, this is Jonathan. So you're 250 to 1, you're right, but I think that gets to the 279 state revenue-sharing stuff, which is a lot of my area of expertise, but that's going to be more legislative changes than what we can do. So curriculum, right? Like, you heard me talking to Bernie some time ago about really personal finance and allowing a student to get out of high school and be able to live on their own. So I, you probably have an answer tonight, but I would love to talk more with you, not personally, but as a school committee, to what can we do within the curriculum for teachers to give them more time to spend more quality time with students? Student-teacher ratio is too high. What can we do as a school committee to help you help kids?
I think you look at the ratio, but I also think you look at how, you know, at the high school, you don't just give a canned social-emotional curriculum, like, today, we're going to talk about self-awareness, right? It's sort of, those are the conversations that you have in classrooms with kids. It's how you conduct yourself, how you greet kids at the door, how you're aware of, you know, is that humor I'm using offensive to this kid? If I'm yelling at the kids in class, so it's also training, right? And working with kids and with teachers. Obviously, lower class numbers are going to improve anybody's day and improve any kid's child's experience. I appreciate, obviously, your knowledge around the 279, I didn't know that, it should be 250, related to the budget and-
Call your elected official.
I will, absolutely. And so I think there's a variety of things that we can do, you know, there's five competencies to social-emotional learning, and we think, and some people may think at home, you know, that's really the parent's job, but what I would argue is that these are all of our children, and it is not fair, the family that you were born into, if they're not able to give you what you deserve. And so if you're not going to get that at home, how can we, as a school, but also as a community at large, help you to get that? And I really think it's through social-emotional learning.
You brought up high school, and again, we've taken up a lot of time on this. It's good stuff, but we've got an agenda ahead of us, but I, you said high school, because that's really where we talk a lot about high school. School committee wants to spend some time on K-6, K-5, I don't know exactly. We need to spend a lot of time on this issue at the younger ages, and how do we do that? Again, we can talk about that another day.
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, I have a 2nd grader at Carl J. Lamb School, so for me, it's incredibly important as well, he is an amazing school counselor at his school, but looking at, how can we give those kids what they need there, right? That's, think of all the important social skills that you learn at that age level, taking a turn, how to make a friend, how to enter a group, how to solve conflict. All those kind of things are social-emotional learning.
I couldn't agree more. Well, with you.
Is that everything, Jonathan, for you?
No, but tonight, yes.
Is that for everything with you?
No.
Anything else from Emily or John, or? Yeah, I think Jonathan kind of hit on, we could talk about this for probably hours. It sounds great that you guys feel that the school's already doing a bunch and working, community is super involved, so, you know, it is what it is, we'll just keep plugging away at it, and maybe someone will come up with a silver bullet at some point, but probably not. So thanks for the presentation. I know it'll stay at the top of our list, I think it always is. I know social-emotional learning always comes up whenever we're talking about everything, so, thanks again. Have a nice night, guys, and let's go on to, you know, for our next agenda item. We've got Beth Lambert, Director of Curriculum. Did you follow that up, Beth?
I can, but I don't have anything to share with you guys tonight, so they just put me on there as a placeholder, I think.
Beth, come on, you're more than a placeholder.
Well, all right, I can share a couple of things with you. Hold on, I have to get this a paper. So now that we have the-
I'm not going to make it.
It's kind of dark in the house tonight, too. So just a quick update, I crunched some numbers, where we had the K-4 students be able to go back, this, today, actually, was the first day. I just wanted to give everybody an update. So currently, right now, we only have 71 students still on Harvard Learning, K-5. We have 21 students graded 6 through 8 in courseware, fully remote, and then our fully remote K-4 students with the teachers, we have 134. We had quite a few of our K-4 remote students go back to in-person learning, as well as a few from- We had, um, quite a few of our K-4 remote students go back to in-person learning, um, as well as a few from Harvard. So I thought that was kind of a, an interesting swing, that we had quite a few people going back.
Do we have a rationale for that, Beth? Is it they just wanted that in-person experience? Or was the, uh, the online experience not what they wanted?
From the conversations that I've had with a lot of parents, their students just missed being in school, missed their teachers, their friends, and that kind of experience. Um, in other pieces, the technology, just learning remotely that much, just wasn't working for their students. So I think it was a combination of a couple of different things.
Yeah, I think it's tough, especially for the younger kids, to be fully remote like that, so. Excellent. Is that it, Beth?
That's it, that's all I have.
Great. Thanks for that, uh, quick update on the spot.
No problem.
So let's go on to Cheryl.
Okay, so first item for me is the CRF update. Um, since, um, well, things are flying through, uh, so since, um, the last meeting, um, we actually submitted for a reallocation, um, portion of the CRF grant, which we were allowed to get another, um, 135,000, which we're going to use to install a system to connect the cafeterium and the gymnasium at C J L to allow for visual and audio between the two areas, so that they can hold larger events and still keep their distance. Um, another, uh, couple items on that same application was winter gear for the food service, uh, to hand out meals. So it's getting colder outside. And packaging for the individual packaging, um, that's, gets pretty expensive. Um, and we never used to do that, so little individual packets that, you know, have the covers and stuff. And of course, um, supplies, which we're mostly going to be using for the library. Because as we keep finding out is that, um, you have to quarantine a book and you can't just hand it out to the next person like you normally could have. So we, we're getting more resource materials. Um, I thought I'd go through, um, some of the items that, um, are getting paid out by all of the different CRF funds. Um, just to, I know you've got bits and pieces of it, but, um, I thought I'd kind of highlight some of the major items. We got lots of computers, iPads, Wi-Fi, enhanced Wi-Fi, um, throughout our, our buildings. Uh, ventilation systems throughout all of our buildings, including central office, um, adult ed. Um, and, um, enhance some of the vocational areas that were our trouble spots to begin with, um, which is very helpful. Um, lots of supplies, like books for library, in curriculum, desks, tables, chairs, barriers, filters. Um, science equipment, calculators, which was, um, an unusual one that I thought of. That, um, because we can't hand off a, um, calculator to another person, um, because you need to be able to clean it in between. Uh, same thing, we're buying a bunch of tools for the, uh, automotive area because you can't hand off a wrench off to the next person to use it. You have to actually be able to clean them in between. So, um, we've bought a lot of tools that are going to, so that each person has their own toolbox and then it gets washed at the end of the night, at the end of the day. Um, because they'd lose too much, um, training time if they had to clean it in between. Uh, CNA help, um, and also, uh, nursing, remote nursing help for when we have COVID cases. Um, IT stuff like Zoom, G-Suites, um, eBooks, that's been a big one. Uh, temperature systems, cameras, and, um, I think some of people have seen the owls sitting around in some of our classrooms. A custodian help, um, which we've hired nine custodians to help out with COVID. Um, substitute teachers, um, to cover for teachers when they're out. Um, IT and HR support, um, because of the additional, um, staff we had to hire, we hired some HR help to help us out. Um, virtual field trips have been something. Uh, enhanced lighting in the parking lots because of drop-off and pickups in the dark, in the darker times of the day, so that, um, it's lighted and makes it safer. Uh, sheds, intercom upgrades, um, communication signs, and, um, washers and dryers to help out with cleaning and supplies. So that's some of the highlight of what, um, CRF is doing for our system, our school system. And, uh, any questions?
Uh, doesn't look like, like, maybe Jonathan looks like he's thinking about something.
Well, no, I'm parti-, I'm partially disgusted, because I'm sure we didn't need half this stuff. When the heck did anybody clean a wrench? But anyway, I, I just, I, I feel bad. I mean, you can't get Congress to help with healthcare with the people that need it in this country and we're throwing money around like the drunken sailors, so. Anyway, no, I'm just, I, I, I'm, I'm happy that we're getting the money, but I'm disgusted at the same time. Sorry, that was, that was editorial.
Got to follow protocols.
Okay, um, so let's move on to the budget schedule, right? What's the next thing?
So the budget calendar, and I'll have Matt chime in, because, um, I'm new to this, um, this year. But I do know that we did add on some additional, uh, workshop times. Um, because, one, under the circumstances, we believe there may be some difficult choices. And, um, so we, you'll see Wednesdays have been added on to our budget calendar to help out with that. And that goes through until we turn it over to the Budget Committee of the city side, um, of the school board.
Yep, Cheryl's right. This is something we talked about at the workshop we held last Thursday night. Uh, it's going to be a difficult budget year. Um, in the past, I think, uh, we looked at starting at the, uh, before our, um, January, last meeting in January for the school committees, when we have the first introduction. Uh, February really becomes the focus. That's when we get our, usually get our 279 report. Um, so knowing that this year, uh, we stood, we stayed with those Monday meetings, but we also added a Wednesday meeting each week, just knowing that it may result in deeper and more conversations that we need and more time to be able to come back. Because as we work on February, we, our goal is to, um, have a, um, regular meeting on Monday, March 1st, uh, as part of that agenda is when we hope to adopt the 2021, 2000 school budget at that night. Because the first meeting with the Budget Committee, uh, Budget Committee, uh, is later that week on March 4th. So that's kind of the timeline that we've put together, uh, to be able to help us, uh, with this work ahead of us.
So essentially, for, uh, school committee members, just block off the entire month of February dedicated to budget discussions.
Cheryl, can you buy some cots for the school committee for that CRF money?
Uh, so any, uh, public at home, all those workshops are open to the public, um, so you're welcome to attend. I know, uh, Ann Hanselman was a regular attendee last year, so she can vouch for how exciting they are. Um, anything else on this topic, Matt? Are we all good? No, we're good.
Can I just ask, can you just, on the screen, can you move it up so I can see what the February dates and times are? Thank you.
I told you, block off the whole month.
Okay, I had one quick question. Are we going to be doing these as a Zoom meeting, or are we going to try to get together on these?
Uh, well, I personally would like to try to be in person. Um, I just think it's more productive that way, but we'll have to see what the, uh, the COVID climate is as we come into February.
I would agree with that, Don. I'd like to be live also.
Yep. That's why I was asking if we try to do it.
Yeah, I just think it's, uh, it is more productive to try to, uh, be face-to-face, even if we are masked at the time. Um, okay, so let's move on then to new business. We have Cheryl with the expense and reconciliation for October. Cheryl, are you muted? Did we lose Cheryl? We may have lost Cheryl. She not here anymore? I don't see, uh, Cheryl under the participants, Matt.
Yes, she's not here.
Should we, uh, just zip through it real quick? We have to vote on it, so. Just down the hall, Matt?
Hi. Um, so mine, the whole system just went down. So-
We have to replace that out of CRF money?
I'm like, whoa, I'm like, nobody else, I've never heard anybody else move, so I had a feeling it was me to just mine, when that flicker happened. Okay, so, um, oh, Steve left, so I can take my mask off. Um, okay, so, uh, October financials, um, so the general, um, general fund for, uh, the general education and education revenues, um, at 18.4 million, with an expense of 19.1, 19 million for a net expense of .6 million. There are 22 special revenue accounts have activity in the current year, um, with about 1.7 million dollars in revenues and 2.3 million in expenses for a net spend of .6 million. And then as of October, you see that we had 1.7 million dollars in, um, cares and CRF funds that have been expended. Um, in the capital, uh, section, we have, um, the three, um, school construction projects going on. And, um, they have a combined revenue of .07 million, which is just interest revenues, and 5.58 million dollars of expenses, um, so far this year. Um, we currently have three enterprise funds, um, same ones as last year, um, in the revenues of .08 million and expenses of .3 million for a net expense of .22 million. Um, and then the trust funds, um, we have 15,000 dollars in revenues and only 2,000 dollars worth of expenses for a net revenue of 13,000. We go on to the second page. For salary and benefits, the schools have spent 7.2 million dollars, an increase of .9 million over prior year. Primary reason is that October had three payrolls, and last year, November is the one that had three payrolls. So it will always look a little higher because of that. Um, so, uh, for the 53,000 accounts of 50, to the 57,000 accounts, um, purchased professional and technical, we had 736,000, uh, property, uh, services of 161,000, purchase services of 455,000, supplies and energy of 541,000, and maintenance of 147,000. In total, are coming in at, um, 59,000 dollars higher than prior year, which isn't bad. And of course, um, debt is at 9.7 million, which, um, is similar to the prior year. Um, so when you also, in the bottom section of the, um, page two, Articles 1 through 4, which is your direct instruction, is at 5.7 million dollars. And Articles 5 through 7, which is your student and staff support, are 2.1 million dollars worth of the expense. Uh, Article 8, which is your transportation, is at .2 million. And your Articles 9, which is all your facilities, including your capital improvement plan or capital projects, um, contributes to 1.5 million. Um, Article 10, which is your debt, is at 9.4 million for the first four months, which, um, we have a very, um, we have, uh, debt that we pay very early in our year. Finally, we have, um, Article 11, which is only 11,000 dollars. And adult education, which is at .2 million dollars. This yields, um, a total of expense of nine, just over 19 million dollars year-to-date. Expenses are about a million above last year, but remember how I talked about at the beginning that we had an extra payroll, and that's about the same amount payroll was over, um, the prior year. Um, so it should return to normal in November. We had .9 million dollars over last year in revenue. And, um, adult education revenue was 3,000 dollars over last year. And, um, any questions? Except I don't have my little book. Is it in the other arm?
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to accept the present, uh, financials as presented. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Emily, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Anybody? Questions?
Well, I do, yeah, Don, you know, I mean, I'm concerned about finances and I wonder where we really are as far as ahead or behind, but we can get into that. We'll be getting into that soon, so I'll save it.
Okay, let's take a vote. Emily, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. Uh, thanks, Cheryl. Good recovery from the, uh, system glitch.
Now I'm going to go figure out what's wrong with my computer. Thanks.
Sounds like you get to go home now. Uh, okay, uh, Jade 2, we actually removed from the agenda. Uh, so we move on to old business, uh, seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to resignations, one of which we actually, uh, removed Jennifer Merrill, correct? So you just have a couple.
Right, Jennifer, uh, has been, uh, replaced. Uh, I do have two. First one, Anthony Papa, custodian at Sanford Middle School, retiring after 31 years. A big thank you to Anthony for all of his contributions and efforts to our schools and our facilities, uh, over the years. And we wish him nothing but the best in his retirement. And then also, um, uh, on the other end, Samantha Palmeroy, a recent hirer, the COVID custodians, uh, with a change in her, uh, situation, is going to have to resign. So, uh, yeah, I want to announce those two.
Excellent, and best of luck to Anthony. Enjoy-
Don, I got a, I have a question for Matt. Matt, if you have a, it might be a good time to do an exit interview with Mr. Papa.
Yep. Yep. Good point, Jonathan. Um, okay, so then we'll move on to staff appointments.
Sure, a couple other, uh, of our COVID custodians, uh, to be hired. Uh, one will be the second shift 40-hour position, Jeremy Shamar. And then the 30-hour, uh, during the day will be Crystal Shaw. And then we also have a, uh, ed tech replacement hiring at Willits, Sarah Gammon, uh, in the Special Education Department. And then a long-term literacy ed tech over Carl J. Lamb will be, uh, Pat Kaplowitz.
Excellent, welcome aboard to them. It looks like we got some coaching appointments as well.
Yeah, you saw earlier in Gordy's presentation, right now the plan is, uh, you know, following the guidelines from the Main Principles Association, the CDC, DHHS, and the DOE, uh, going ahead with the athletic, um, schedule. These are our winter coaches, so we're having their nominations come on this morning, uh, this evening, uh, so that we can be able to, uh, have them, as Gordy said, all set up and ready to go.
Excellent, sounds like a plan. Okay, staff transfers, I see none. Uh, staff nominations, none. Uh, surrender policies, everybody's favorite part of the agenda. Steve?
Good evening. I have just one quick policy tonight for a second reading, and that is policy KBF-E1, the Title I Parent Involvement Policy. Um, this policy was last updated in June of 2005. Um, as part of our annual Title I Program Review, the Maine Department of Ed requested that we review our policy. The policy is still in compliance with current regulations of the Title I Program. Um, the updated policy reflects changes in the oversight of the program from the Assistant Superintendent, um, as that role was not present in 2005. And it changes the affiliation of our parent groups from parent teacher organizations, PTOs, to the current affiliation of PTA's, parent teacher associations. And I recommend this policy for a second read.
Excellent. I will, uh, make the, uh, motion to adopt KBF-E1 as presented. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Mapes. Any discussion from everybody? Okay, we'll put, take a vote. Uh, Emily, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that policy's now all set. Good work, Steve. Uh, next, we have items for future agendas.
Yeah.
Yeah?
But Don, I was just going to, uh, jump in, uh, following our workshop, uh, last Thursday. Uh, one of the things I'm looking at, uh, for our next meeting in December, um, would be, uh, I think it would be good to have, uh, Beth Lambert do a fi-, uh, personal finance presentation, uh, to show what's going on in the district, uh, with that, uh, what, what we're currently doing for that. I think that could be helpful for the school committee. And, and then also looking at, uh, Stacy Bissell, possibly- And then also, looking at Stacy Bissel possibly presenting, giving an overview on the Bridge Program, that was something else that came up in our workshop last Thursday, to take at that. Obviously, I'm concerned by some of that MYOS data earlier in the presentation. I know we're working at our level and with administrators to be able to continue to look at that. I also wonder, it's a long meeting tonight, but maybe in the future, we might also get our student reps' perspectives on what they saw in the MYOS data and some of their takeaways as well. Just some recommendations for future agendas.
No, that's excellent. I actually thought about asking, but with a couple reps being new, I didn't want to put them on the spot that quick. So maybe when they get a little more comfortable and they settle in. Anything from anybody else? I know budget's going to become a big part of it, so we'll have more than enough to chat about.
Music to my ears, Matt, talking about personal finance. It's very exciting, good way to end the meeting.
Well, you bring it up and up, Jonathan. We've got to talk about it sometime.
Someone will pay attention to me sometime.
Hey, Don, squeaky wheel.
Squeaky, and if there's a squeaky wheel, it's Jonathan.
There's a squeaky wheel.
No, I agree with you 100%, you know that. Calendar announcements, we've got our next regular meeting on December 21st. For all the Emily and Kendra fans, that is going to be their last one, so make sure you tune in. Then we have the 4th of January and the 25th, and I can't believe it's already almost 2021. We've got the SPAC performance this Saturday, we'll plug that again. Anything else anybody wants to bring up for calendar announcements?
Not calendar announcements, but can I just say a couple things?
Whatever, sure.
One, I just feel like it's really prudent to remind people to do their part when it comes to COVID. Wear a mask, protect yourself, protect others, keep your distance. But also, I've been, I, I paid attention, I want to let you know, but that MYOS data really got to me. And it really hit me at home. And I just want to say, from someone who works at the community center here in town, that I think just even a small difference we as adults can make in a child's life, each interaction that we have with a child, make it positive, ask how their day is doing, treat them with respect also, can make a huge impact. I think about that all the time with every interaction that I have with, especially, I mean, I, I work with service organizations that come in. I often see many of the kids that we see at the disciplinary hearings come and do their community service where I work. And I make sure that I'm asking how they're doing, what can I do to help them? I just wanted to add that, because that data really just was tough for me to swallow.
I couldn't agree with you more, Emily. It's amazing how much difference you can make in somebody's life just by being kind to them.
Exactly.
Okay, then let's wrap it up. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Rue, this is you.
He's already gone.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Emily, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes, please.
John?
No.
And I will vote in the affirmative, motion carries 3 to 1.
Perfect.
Yeah, everybody, thanks for joining tonight. It was long, but I think that data was important to go through, so.
Have a great day, everyone.
Have a great night.
Thank you.